Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. I'll call the Brandon Select Board to Order for November 25th. First item is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
No.
There's a motion and a second. For changes, I have a request to move Item 5 to follow Item 2. So that we're moving the revolving fund request to precede the Town Manager's Report. Are there any other additions or changes to be made to the agenda as it's been published, Mr. Atherton? Is that handled?
I'm sorry. I was...
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Any other changes to the agenda? If not, ready to vote on adoption of the agenda. All in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. I have it. Item 2, approval of the Select Board minutes of November 11th.
Cool.
Motion by Mr. Wyman to approve. Second by Mr. Coolidge. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as presented? If not, all in favor of the minutes as they've been presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. You guys have it.
Stay.
Mr. Bailey abstains. Forgot about that. Thanks, Mr. Bailey. Item 5, Mr. Moore.
Uh, thank you. I'll read a letter presented to you guys in the... In your board packets. On October 29th, the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund Committee met to consider a loan request from Mary Falcone, Executive Director of the Safer Society Foundation Incorporated. As the publisher distributor of books for the prevention of sexual and social violence, the foundation has been operating in Brandon since 1995. The organization is looking to grow their business and have been presented with a unique opportunity to absorb their main competitor in a niche but captive market. The members present voted unanimously to approve a $28,250 loan for the Safer Society Foundation. Terms of loan is 60-month loan with the first six months being interest-only payments, amateurized at a 3% rate, collateral will be security interest in the assets and equipment associated with the business, and specifically first security interest in the book inventory. With that, Mary Falcone here from the Safer Society answering any questions you guys might have about the loan.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Would like me to stand up?
No need. Unless there are any questions, the Safer Society's been in Brandon for 20-plus years. They have moved to Park Street within the last several years. Any questions from the board regarding the revolving loan fund request? Paperwork was all in the packet. It was the pleasure of the board on the revolving loan fund request.
I want to approve the... All the recommendations from the committee.
Mr. Bailey moves to approve, and Mr. Wyman seconds. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of approval of the loan to the Safer Society Foundation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? You guys have it. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Best wishes in your expanded enterprise. It's exciting. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say that we are trying to get more involved in Brandon. We've been here for so long, and everybody keeps asking us, "Who are you people?"
It's a quiet neighborhood.
We are. We're sponsoring mixer in Brandon.
Where do you go?
Yeah. So we get to know each other more. Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 3, the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Atherton.
Okay. This is my report for the weeks of November 11th and 18th, September 7th. So I'm gonna just do a little anticipated upcoming work, which is getting smaller and smaller, so... Uh, doing four main installations of stairways to residential properties and other locations. Installation of connecting walkways to both residential and commercial properties. Sewer and stormwater structure cleaning and sealing. Tree and landscaping, weather-dependent, which that's certainly coming to an end. And installation of railings on handrails and guardrails. All of those, I think, 11 spots sometime are doing that. And we're starting preliminary punch lists. U-Industriest Side Rock, that's been put on, but shut down until spring due to weather, and all they have left is a section of sidewalk for, so that would've been done. Other happenings, buildings at 449 and 419 New Road, and the land has been leveled. 57 and 31 Newton Road are in the process of demolition and should be completed this week. Attended the Rotten Regional Planning Commission meeting on November 19th to represent the town for the energy plan approval, which was approved, so that's good. We'll be incorporating that in our town plan. Also stayed for the commissioners' meeting. There was a presentation on mapping and its usefulness with projects and statistics for towns. And I also attended the regional transportation meeting on the 21st. It was a presentation by V-Trans on public transit and how it will be changing with electric and automated vehicles. And there was also discussion on how communities can promote more public transit use. We did pick up the new Ford F-550 last week, and it's already been seen used with much winter cleanup. I came by the office earlier this week. It's a very nice truck, and it's red, so you'll see it. Or we'll have a lettering on it pretty soon here. So, rec news. On November 19th and 20th, we held Otter Community Collaborations, 3rd and 6th Grade Basketball Camp at Otter Valley, partnership with Otter Valley varsity basketball teams and Pittsford Rec. Eight boys and 15 girls from Brandon Rec attended and worked with high school teams to get ready for their upcoming season. Our youth 12... Registration deadline is November 24th. The youth 10 registration opens on December 2nd. Brandon Rec Youth Cross Country Team participated in the Middlebury Turkey Trot 5K. This is our fourth year having a youth cross country team, and thanks to the efforts of coaches Sam Stone and Bruce Pirlo, 10 new racers were given a great introduction to this lifelong sport. Worked with Sue Hoxsey of Maple Room Marketing and Neshabie Golf Course Manager Matt Wilson for the inaugural Neshabie Pie Gobbler 5K Fun Run Stroll Walk. That's for Thanksgiving morning on November 28th. Not too late to join the fun and register for this race. Visit our website for registration. The first place, male and female finishers, will get a freshly baked pie as an added bonus. Every 10th finisher also gets a pie. Registration begins at 7:00 a.m., race starting at 8:00. The off-road course is on the cart path of the beautiful Neshabie Golf Course. Only eight tickets remain for the Boston Celtics trip on March 27th, and a full slate of offerings for the Brandon Town Hall winter season will be available in print and online starting December 2nd. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Questions for the Town Manager from the board? Mr. Coolidge? And Mr. Bailey?
Yeah. I think we answered some of them in budget meetings, right? And I just wanted to... I had a couple people talk about the downtown parking, and so I must not be a member, maybe I am. So the first question was, when do we get our lot back? And I know you said probably by Wednesday or...
They're all gonna be all cleaned out of there this week.
All cleaned out, so we can do that. And so we will be trying to get the word out to the residents of the Abashon Building that that's where they should park, or...
Well, they've been parked, and then our other lot behind Cafe Provence.
Okay. All right. And then the only other question I had is the... Well, downtown lights look fantastic. When we see a light out, do we notify you if we see a light out? Or where does the maintenance of that come in?
You can. I mean, it's still under punch lists, so... Yep. They did go through them not too long ago because there were a bunch that were getting triggered by car lights with the sensors. So a lot of them have been reset, but certainly let... Yeah, shoot me an email or something, because I'll let Jeff and Casselus know.
Noticed one by cars, but it's got a three-light bulb. One of the lights isn't on.
I think it's broken. I think that one is damaged somehow, so we know that that one is out. It's been out for a while, but we'll pass that along.
That's all I can...
And Mr. Bailey, Mr. Geiles?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Wyman?
Really?
Questions from the public for the Town Manager? Nothing from the public for the Town Manager. Mr. Bailey? I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Atherton. I have one other one. The Newton Road, we now become the proud owner of these couple of house lots, and I know there will be some more coming. Will we be maybe taking ideas into what to do with that area? Maybe public access to the river or something?
So we looked into that a few years back about when we, you know, when we did the first one, and it gets tricky with us providing public access to the state's waterways. So where the 449 and 419 came down, the land's relatively flat, so we were looking at maybe we do a wall field down there, you know, something that's not gonna be... You know, if it's damaged during a flood, it's not gonna be catastrophic. Hopefully, the kids aren't playing when it happens, but... And because we're gonna be getting the last house there, too, so those three lots will all be gone. Yeah, I don't know what else we do with it, you know? I was thinking on the other end of Newton Road, it could be a nice park area. You've got the store and the post office right there, and, you know, maybe that'll help us to promote building a sidewalk up there someday, too.
Yeah. But that's my idea, is we should be... We're gonna own a good chunk there, and we should be doing something with it. I'm not sure if we need another park, but we're gonna do something.
So actually, there was one other thing that I wanted to add on, too. I also was asked a couple years back to sit on the state ERF boards, the Emergency Revival Systems Fund, because they're trying to revamp it to figure out how communities can get... Miss Charles can get more funding. We do the criteria to get it to high mark, so we get our 17.5%. And some of that flooding came up, and it was interesting that some towns signed resolutions to not do buyouts because they did not want their grand list to go down, which I found amazing. Well, you know, a flood-damaged house isn't really worth much after the second flood, so I'm glad that we're doing it and that, you know, we're getting folks out of our lives.
Yeah. I think those three lots at the end of the street, you know, could be a nice little area, and I'm... Wall field, another dog park, or something. I mean, we should make something practical to our area, so...
No, I agree with it.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Other questions from the public for the Town Manager? Yes, ma'am?
You are going to address the Town Farm Loan tonight, is that correct? I got that letter.
I have a letter, and we can talk about it in the very next item.
Okay.
So if there are no other questions for the Town Manager, we move on to that. Public comment and participation, and we'll start with the board. Mr. Wyman?
Really?
Items on, we attended Mr. Geiles, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Coolidge. Okay, so we have a couple of letters. We have... Where is the Town Farm Letter? I guess I'll look at Mr. Bailey's. Let me look at this place. Look, now it got through. I think Mrs. Dwyer, by chance?
One vote.
Mrs. Quinville? All right. So we have a letter here that is signed by, it looks like Ed and Becky Dwyer. And we have Mrs. Quinville here, who lives on Town Farm Road, regarding the truck traffic on Town Farm Road. So this is something that the board has talked about a couple of times. We've talked about it with Mr. Rickert. We've talked about it with a larger group of folks. So do you have something you'd like the board to consider about the truck traffic?
I wanted to check the letter. I just wanted to see what was going on, because I have almost been run off that road more than once. People have to jump in the ditch, which it said, "You can't walk your dog or your children there." The trucks drive way over the speed limit, and I went to the town office several times once to address the fact that they had their weight sign out for the early spring. Didn't do any good. They just kept going over it even though the sign was posted. Our road's a mess most of the time. You know, we like to have a nice coverage. Can't keep it that way on that road.
Mr. Atherton, do you have some insight as to where we are? I know that we had... We did, as I said, we've talked about this a couple of different meetings, and I think we left it at looking for a traffic study, because...
Yep. So just one thing. I think there was a misconception, too, that this letter came from the town. This was not done by the town of Brandon somewhere.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay. There were some folks that were...
No, I understand that, because I've been into talk with the town, and they never wanted to do anything about it, so...
Well, we've done quite a bit with it. I mean, we had signs up. We just did a traffic study through the Regional Planning Commission. Once they compile the results, I'll know. I mean, and it'll tell us what size vehicles are going down the road, how many a day, what the average speed...
Trucks.
Yeah, no, but it'll tell us everything. It tells us by axle distance on who's... What, where, and when, and how fast. So we'll have all that. As soon as they put the numbers together, we'll have them, and we can share them and go from there.
So the board has talked about reducing the speed limit. The board, you know, we did for a time prohibit through trucks on the road, and then we reconsidered that decision in light of some other information that we got. So I think where the board is right now is that you're the second person from the road besides the letter writer.
I've been here 10 years, so I've seen it all, believe me.
So where... I guess what I would say is your concern is noted at the board right now, and what the board is waiting for is the results of this traffic study that Mr. Atherton was just talking about, where they've counted the number of vehicles and the types and the speeds and so forth. And that's the information that the board has to point to if we do decide to make a change to the policy.
I even have the names of the trucks, like New Voice and whatever. I noted them all. Some of them are from other towns, Charm, wherever they come to get their salt or sand, whatever it is. There's three pits on that road, and that does make it hard, but we shouldn't have to pay them kind of taxes to have them ruining our road after they grade it once and two days later, it's the same again.
We have weighed the... And with the highway form, and we've weighed the costs and benefits of regrading the unpaved road versus what's... What the alternate route is, which is a paved road, but there are two undersized bridges on the paved road and so forth.
There's a road that goes right directly across from one of the pits, and it goes right out to Route 7 if you go down Lover's Lane and cross. It's there. They don't have to go up and down that road.
And I think that Richmond Road has been posted no trucks for quite some time.
I know. So has ours, and it didn't do any good. I went right down one day and said, "The sign is out. You just posted it. The roads are knee-deep in mud, and they're still traveling over." And I said, "If you don't move over, they're running right out the road." And that's the truth.
Chief, have you got any new information since last time you talked to the board about this?
I don't have any new information, and I have not heard from Mr. Rickert. You know, from past meetings and experience at times that we've run radar down there and the speed estimates that we've had from the... Not just the truck traffic, but vehicles as well. And I think the smartest thing to do is wait to see what information we get from that traffic study and let the board make a determination from that point on.
Did the letter go out from the town to the known trucking companies?
We did not do one. You and I had talked about doing one. Lester did do one. I actually checked in with them today, and they said it did not go over well. So they... And actually, Julie had read me the letter today, too, on what they were doing. They actually... They did the same thing with, I think it was the Sheriff's Department and State Police that did a traffic study on... Must've been the Delormand or First of Row, because they had complaints there. And they... Julie said she could share that information with me, too, with what their study was, so... But I mean, I'm the...
Is there any benefit? And we talked about this a little bit. Is there any benefit to this board and Lester Select Board meeting together?
I don't know. It's up to you guys.
Probably not before the traffic study.
I mean, I just think, you know, someone's always gonna be in this room complaining about trucks going down their road, no matter where we do it, or where we move it, or whatever. The last time we discussed this, it was that that was the shortest distance from the pits out of town, and that was why it was done that way. You know, we... There are multiple pits on that road, and we can't say, "No trucks," and tell these people they can't do business anymore. And, you know, we went through that right in this room not that long ago. I think... And it's hard when, you know, our police department gets zero complaints on it. Nobody calls. You know, we heard of someone being run off the road, but no one called and made a complaint on it. I mean, you know, how do you follow up on them?
I think the complaint, one of the complaints that was run off the road, it was happening in Lester, it didn't happen in Brandon, if I remember right.
Mrs. Quinville, are you sitting there along...
50 years.
Okay. Significantly different this year than other years? Is it... Or, I mean, is it better?
Depends on the weather a lot, but I never thought they did as good on our road as they could. They give a new grader guy, and he's gotta learn how to run it and do whatever. My husband was into equipment. He also was a trucker, and we got fined a lot whenever we did anything we weren't supposed to do. He got fined. I don't think these guys are getting fined for... You stop them, now they're not supposed to be on their road. Is there any such thing as a fine?
That's not posted, I think. They can do it.
It is posted. Right down the road from where my house is, there's a sign on the thing that says whatever weight the truck is and the date that it starts and the date...
So, and then a lot of those truck companies come to us and get an overweight permit every year or two. They have to file with the town. They do it every year. When we have it, we show as revenue on our budget.
And that's... That permit is issued on the Public Works Department recommendation or not, right? They sometimes don't.
During one season. During some seasons. But they have to be... Well, they... They're supposed to be permitted with the town to drive over on our roads all year.
Anything over your posted... Anything over your posted weight on your town road, any trucking company that's coming down through it is supposed to be permitted to be on the road.
Almost everything other than our class ones have a...
And the town...
A weight limit on it.
And the town, if I remember right, the town sets, I don't know if it's a road form, they set line like Prospect or the Prospect Street. There's some streets that they're not allowed. The town only issue a permit on. There's certain streets and roads that the town won't issue permits on.
So my question really was trying to determine from your opinion whether it's the condition of the road or is there a significant increase in truck traffic on the road? And if so, was it the project we had going?
Well, this year, there probably was, because of trying to get rid of the mess that was in town. I believe we got more traffic then. If I also didn't make things any worse, I mean, you just said the wait. If you went to town, you waited, if you go out of my driveway... I'm on Quinville Drive, actually, which goes down away from the road, but I sometimes I have to sit there and wait for three or four cars, which waiting is not a problem. It's the idea that after you get on the road and you meet them, and they're coming on your side of the road, and you keep moving over and over. I know they don't want to get too far out, because they're afraid to get into a soft shoulder and with a load on, they're gonna go over. So these years, they run us off the road. I know a little bit about trucking, and I do know that they have problems, but I do know there's an alternative right there across the road that they can go down. Bi-wheelers across take them not any longer than it does to go our road. And we have a lot of houses on our road. There's not as many going down.
I think Richmond Road has been posted for no trucks. There's some corners issues on Richmond Road, too, I think, right? Isn't there?
Yeah. It's got this big turn by the Green and Red.
And, I mean...
They have some issues on Lover's Lane also. One of their issues is Lover's Lane.
So I guess by way of response, I would thank you for coming and letting us know about your concern and adding it to the concern expressed by the Dwyers and Mr. Rickert. And would say that, you know, the board has heard the concerns and that we're gonna wait to hear what the traffic study says about what is even...
When you get the traffic study done?
The Regional Planning Commission did it for us, right? The Rotten Regional Planning Commission did it. So if it's happened, they just have to now compile the numbers and bring that to the town?
And I would add that I'm always concerned when people say they don't feel safe, you know, where they live. And I think whenever you don't feel safe, you should try to report it in some fashion. And I think the police are the right people to call if you think that there's been unsafe driving. Try to get the license, some information. It's ultimately how we build up a body of knowledge to make decisions.
I don't know. I told all of my sons, I was coming out here, you said you're going for nothing, and I don't listen to you, so I guess that's what that amounts to.
Well, I don't want you to feel like you're not listened to, but we have decided... We have decided that we're gonna have to wait for the numbers to come from the traffic study to go to the next step.
And when they come, then what?
And when they come, we don't know. It'll depend on what the numbers indicate. You know what I mean? I mean, there will be trucks. There are gravel pits. There will be trucks.
Yeah.
If we take them off of your road, we're gonna have everybody who lives on Richmond Road in here saying, "Please take them off of our road."
Well, let them go around the lake that way. That's all lots all the way.
Well, we have the two underside... We have two undersized bridges there.
That, and you've got a lot more...
We have a Town Farm Road bridge.
A lot more residential area also.
Have you counted the houses on our road?
I have. There's 25 to 27 houses from the Lester line to the Brandon line. There is over...
On top of your road.
On top of your road. From the Lester line to the pit road, to where the pit, to Richmond road. I think there's 27 houses.
28, I think, yeah. The one that's set way up.
Somewhere's give or take. If you go over the route that you just proposed, to go over...
Forest Dale.
Forest Dale and get on Forest Dale Road.
Well, I know, but...
I mean, we've got, you know, we've got 100 and... We've not counted any houses they've turned down. You've got 150 crossroads along with a lot of pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic, which...
So we have little children...
No, I understand that, too.
...that's why they're rolling with the stairs or anything. That's the other question.
Yeah. But I mean, that's a... I mean, we have the same problem on the... We have the same problem on the... On the tar road. It's a... It's an issue that I don't know how we are gonna crack that.
So why did you send that letter, Jason? Your name was on it.
What's that?
The letter. Why did you send it saying...
I didn't send a letter.
Your name was on it.
This letter.
We don't know who...
This letter.
This letter, I didn't send a letter.
This came to us.
This came to me. I didn't...
This came to the five of us. It's not really... It's not at all from the five of us. It appears that way.
I was gonna ask if anyone knew who did send the letter.
No idea.
Well, there's only two signatures on it, but we don't know that that's their letter anymore.
No. It looks like it was sent to everybody on those roads. And if you see, it says on it to jot down what your thoughts are on the back of the paper, and so it was sent to...
Yeah, and I didn't do that. I just... I just said I...
I have no idea who wrote it, so...
And obviously it was someone that travels that road or lives on that road.
Sure. So, we're, we're hearing, we're hearing the concern and we're going to try and hear the, the numbers next before we do anything, if anything is possible.
So, if you have another meeting and you're going to address this, will we be invited to that door? Are we still aware that?
So, if the traffic study comes back to Mr. Atherton like tomorrow or sometime before the next meeting, he would put on the agenda, he would put Town Farm Road Traffic Study or something to that effect. And then we would get it at that meeting and talk about it then.
I think she's asking, is there a way, I think, Mrs. Fins was asking, is there a way that the Town Farm, the Town Farm Road residents would be notified, could be notified? Is that what you're trying to?
Yes, I, I.
We post the meetings at Forest Dale Brochery and from the town office and they're on the website, so. These are all public meetings. They're the second and fourth Monday of every month. So, attend anytime you want. Just even look on our website at our agenda and it'll show what we're going to discuss.
I, I'm sorry that there's not a, a good answer. There's not, there's not action today. And I know that you are.
I guess I just thought maybe they were going to finally do something about it, but they have done the false thing and that doesn't do any good. I can take you right up, put your hand right on the poster. It's been there since a few years, wherein in the spring of the year, they clean it up and make sure people can see it, but they don't pay any attention to it. Like I said, we have been fined. My husband was when he was alive, many, many times, a little bit overloaded or whatever, whatever, not enough scraps around the truck, all kinds of things. They weren't afraid to find us, but these guys don't get fined. They do it and they laugh at you and they just keep doing it. And Gary DuBois has been having a truck long enough, he knows better, and I've met him on the road, hands some of his drivers' hands. They drive like heck, I'm telling you. Not that I'm against driving. I've got grandchildren and sons and everything, they all drive fast too, but they don't run you off the road.
Okay. Anything else from us? Thank you. And just if we could ask for your forbearance while we wait for some more information and we'll see, see what that brings.
I guess I may as well leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other items not on the agenda, we have a letter from Margaret Cars regarding animal control. Did you want to say anything about it to the board at this time? This is a letter that I think just came to us today.
So, I'm interested. I know that there is currently an animal control officer in the area. I've done before and enjoy doing and eager to start because we're here and I'm settled enough and now I, I want to get out there. But the only, the only concern that I have and the only hesitation that I've had and the reason why it didn't come until today is I know, I've been in this situation before and with the pay as it is right now, it would cost me money to be an animal control officer. And I would just like you all to know that I am eager and I love this position, but.
So, I would thank you very much for the interest and for expressing it and say that we're just starting today. We started the budget writing process for next year and I wonder if you might be able to speak with Mr. Atherton about what you see the position in tailing so that when we have our next budget writing workshop, we, I don't actually remember what the topic is, but when we have the department that that, you know, would fall under, we would have an idea of, of what you would require to do the position in the way that you see the need to be met.
Thank you.
Other comments, ideas? Thank you.
I'm definitely not looking for like, you know, a full, full-time wage, just, you know, the practice.
That's relief.
Yes. In the great, in the great grand scheme of it, animal control is a position where you are on the call 24/7 every single day of the year. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's 3:00 in the morning and there's a llama in the road, you're supposed to respond to that. I'm from Maine, so we were helped by. But, you know, being able to pay my car payment in a year, that, that wouldn't be so bad, you know?
Can you remind us, Mr. Cram's term ended as animal control officer and is Mr. Kopeck doing this now?
No.
Do we have anybody doing this now?
Who would be our chief of the police?
He raises his hand. Chief, Chief Raquel and the department. Has it been active since you've assumed the responsibilities?
It's one of those types of events that goes up and down. Since, since Mr. Cram left his position at the town, we've had 27 animal complaints that we've had since July. And sometimes they're very legitimate, time-consuming and other times they're really neighbor disputes about someone's dog on their property that just go back and forth and just need a little mediation.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And pass along the board's thanks to the officers for taking care of this responsibility, which I know is not their dream. Other public comment and participation, other items not on the agenda tonight?
I have a question about the revolving loan funds for Park Street and the SRF. Are those estate loans? Is that, and those are presented as warrants to the select board or for payment? How, how does that work?
Not as a warrant.
Quite simply at all.
It's presented as a loan document that the select board has to sign. So, the one that's called drinking water is, no, clean water. One of them is water and one of them is sewer. They have very similar names. The Fire District is our partner for the whole project, but they're the ones who would be the drinking water people. We run the sewer system, so we're on, we're on that one.
And the town disperses the funds from the loan, is that correct?
The town would be receiving the funds from the loan to construct the infrastructure.
To disperse.
Right.
So, what's the check and balance on the dispersment? I mean, like, the road project was a warrant to the select board for approval. So, how, how does the revolving, where's the check and balance on the revolving loan?
So, it will be, it will be administered by the town, like the overall project will be administered. So, we had to apply for the loan and show to the loan funding organization, these are the engineering costs, these are the construction costs and so on and so forth. So, they have, they have approved the amount that we requested to do the project, which then went on to bid.
Right.
And we had a number of bids, right, under the Park Street agreement? We had a competitive bid process, which was awarded and then will be executed by that company. Not sure.
Well, it's very much like the segment six in that it was awarded and.
Right, so there will be, when construction starts and probably already when the engineering has happened, there will have been items on the regular warrant to pay the engineers for the designs that they've already done. There will be items on the regular warrant to pay the construction contractor for what they're going to put in the ground.
Very much like the segment six, the warrant will go.
Well, it won't be separate. It won't be separate, it will be, are we on federal prompt pay for that? That's a good question.
No.
We're not on federal prompt pay, so this won't be a separate, this will be incorporated with the regular bill paying routine. I understand, I understand now where you're coming from.
I'm wondering how you avoid like, something like the Mr..
Because we won't be on the federal prompt pay.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying? So, it will come to the board in the matter of the normal routine and the board will have, is it the brown folder now? It's all invoices and that will come before checks get fired out the door.
Gotcha.
Now I get what you're asking and that's the answer.
Gotcha. And then I, I do have another question.
Yeah.
Last time I asked this, I, I don't think there's been any plan for the parking lot next to us here, the public parking lot. Is, when is that going to start so that it really becomes the safe public parking lot?
I'm with Mr. Atherton, no, I don't think.
No idea.
We haven't developed plans. We have applied for a grant for an electric car charging station, which would be installed in that location.
We're, that's supposed to go on in April. We're looking at seeing what we can do for payment in April, but that'd be.
We've talked about various surfacing options, not all of which were asphalting the whole half acre kind of thing.
We also have a Dunkin' Donuts that's going to be going in pretty soon and.
Do we know what they're anticipating?
I haven't heard from them in a while. Have we heard from the folks running the, that project?
We talk to Mr. Duke share every now and then. They're just waiting for things to wrap up.
They're waiting for things to clear up there.
Yep.
Because they're kind of wrapping up next door, they're moving everywhere.
Coming back in the spring though. We're going to do the bridge slide in the spring.
And using the same.
We're going to have, we're going to have to stage somewhere.
Right. But we, we don't know where that's going to be at, or at this point done.
No, it's under discussion.
Other public comment? If not, we'll move along. We have segment six to approve the use of some of the local option tax that has been collected, that has been collected. Do you have information further than what we've got here that you want?
So, Sue was looking at, she didn't want to tap into the line of credit because we're going to run pretty good with segment six to our funds. But now that we're nearing the end and things are coming closer, she would like to request transferring some funds out of the local option tax to put into our segment six fund to cover our matching funds.
So, just to recap, the board's policy is attached to this request. Thank you for supplying that, right? And so, the board's policy from 2017 is that we would extend the local option tax from a dedicated reserve fund and only for capital projects within the town. And since we have begun collecting the local option tax, we have not spent anything from it. So, the fund has been accumulating and the board's consensus has been that the first and best use of it would be to meet the match for segment six. So, now we're at the point where segment six is winding down and so what the treasurer is asking us for is to make the first momentous dispersment from the local option tax fund to go toward our segment six match so that she can avoid incurring interest by borrowing money on our cash flow line of credit.
Very well said.
So, that, that's what this request is. What's the pleasure of the board?
I will make the motion that we transfer 150,000 from the line to segment six matching fund.
Mr. Bailey moves, Mr. Wyman seconds to approve the transfer of $150,000 from the local option tax fund to the segment six matching fund. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Any proceed?
Do we know what our 1% fund is right now, Ronson Coles?
Actually, I do have it here. I'm sure you will, give me one second. I'll try to bring it in there. So, we just had a, we just had a payment come in. We'll just do some quick math here. Well, it's 4658, it's about 530, 530,000 of that.
Okay, don't throw your magic number.
Roughly. Yeah. That was quick in my head.
Yep, that's great. So, so that is the purpose that we, one of the things we wanted to do this, develop infrastructure, capital projects, but right in line with what we're doing. I also know that we've been trying to use some of the MTM management money that we were receiving. Do we know what we've paid on that year to date?
I don't have that number from Doug, but I believe that that has all been expended. I think it was like 86,000.
Oh, I think it's more like 130, but I don't have it in the record.
Okay, so I called Sue today about this. So, she says 137,957.61 has come to the town for the municipal project management reimbursement. And she advised that she has been transferring that quarterly from that account to the segment six account. So, she has been using that the way that we all decided was the best way to use that. So, that money has offset the town's match by 137,000 and some change.
So, doing that on a math correlates to by having that M money and putting 137 roughly in as our 5% match, we did cover $2 million worth of our over, or under-bonded from this project from many years ago. So, I just wanted that to be pointed out as reasoning of my questioning.
Even more. It was. 2.7?
Was that 137 times 20.
Two and three quarters million.
So, so that was a huge benefit to the town and saved us tapping into a big chunk of our 1% money already. So, I, I'm very comfortable in, in putting the 150 in at this point from our, from my discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And I, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Atherton and Mrs. Gage, Ms. Gage, and all of the town staff for the way that they've handled, the way that they've handled this, because I think that we are in the best position that we could expect to be in for a project that we approved bonding for in 2006 and which increased many times with design changes and cost of materials increases over the intervening time before we broke ground on it in 2017. So, I think that that is great and I appreciate all the people to keep us informed of, of the various funding positions. Further discussion? If not, I'm in favor of approval of the expenditure of this money by transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Perfect. Item seven, general fund war.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bailey moves.
I'd like to approve the general fund war in the amount of 193,665.64.
Mr. Bailey moves to approve. Mr. Cooley seconds. Any questions on the warrant?
Yeah, I just have one. On page four, there's a check with no check number and no check date to KS State Bank, which is the first payment to the truck. And I was just kind of curious why, maybe it was just a typo, maybe the date. Do you know why those are empty?
No, I don't look right now. I might have done.
Sure, it was electronic.
Yeah, I bet it was an ACH.
But there should, there should be a date on it, I guess. Even if it was electronic.
Well, the general state is 11692.
This is the new red truck that's releasing? ACH on Tuesday, no check. So, we'll send it out tomorrow. It has a number of 310624 and it's got the account number, share the, our number for AP here and go by ACH to.
For $21,000, 25.
Yep, 256 cents.
Other questions on the warrant? If not, ready to vote? All in favor of the first warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman stays. Second, our group seven.
I'll make the motion to approve that one. 437,000 by the regular 1.67.
Mr. Cooley moves to approve. Is there a second?
Thanks.
Second from Mr. Bailey. Any discussion?
Yeah, Dave, did you get a chance to look at the Tesla invoices and do they look like they're in order?
Yep.
Great.
Of the first three bills, the marketing and economic development project.
Yeah, that comes out of that additional funding we got.
The additional funding. Excellent.
Just kind of wrapping up. Another, the website one is for the whole project, so they build a second. And just so you note too, with that, Bernie Cars last day of PIO is the summer first, so. All calls can be directed to me.
Any further discussion on Route 7 warrant?
I, I assume we'll be getting segment six building in for a year.
No, we were just talking about this before the meeting. I mean, we, I'm sure we won't see a project close out until this time next year.
Next year.
Okay, cool. Ready to vote? All in favor of the Route 7 warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Mr. Wyman stays. Okay, at this time, the board will recess and then we're going to convene for an executive session, after which will the general.